Good evening and welcome to the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. It is October 12th, and if you would all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, unafid nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mike. Are there any additions, dilutions, changes to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. General public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Tabulator update. Louis?
So I've been working with Betsy on getting the new tabulator. It had been ordered. We've -- there was a bunch of documents that had to come in that we had to sign off on. The cost is $5,800. It's being delivered to the Polley Town Hall or Town Office. That cost is not included the first software program, and we will have to program it for the ballots.
For what?
And that cost is estimated to be between $500 to $1,200. I have heard two different amounts, so I'm not positive on the amount of the programming. And that would be an annual cost based on the ballots that we're programming for.
Is that per vote, Louis?
Per vote, yes.
Per vote.
Does that just for us as a school, or if the town used it, does that -- would that?
Well, the town has their own.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they have their own tabulator, so this would be the school's tabulator.
Okay. And so you're gonna -- will we not know till March? Because that's a pretty big difference, 500 to 1,200.
I know our town pays 1,200.
Yeah, but you're doing town and school, so, just like we're doing.
So I know when I spoke to Betsy, she said 1,200, but then through another conversation, I thought she had mentioned 500.
Okay. I mean, if you could just get back to us.
So I can definitely confirm that and just shoot it into an email or whatever. But it was definitely within -- even the cost of the machine and the software was within line with what the board approved of the $8,000. And after the software program is what it is, it's going to be a set cost this year.
Yeah, it is what it is, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions about that? All right. Hopefully, that will make a smoother transition.
The thing is that that tabulator will move if somebody else becomes the clerk. So it's there now because she is the clerk, but it would change. It would follow whoever.
Correct. It would reside -- and technically speaking, I mean, it's very helpful to have an existing town clerk be our clerk, but I don't think that's a requirement, so it eventually will sit -- it'll sit in one of our towns, whether, no matter who the clerk is, but it'll make sense where our clerk resides.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Betsy's happy.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to new business. We need to elect our proxy for VISA and VIHI. So VIHI is for the health, and VISA is for unemployment, so it's just voting for us at the annual meeting. So, are you going?
No.
So Linda's going from Quarry Valley, so if there are no objections.
Eric's going too, right? So we have.
Eric's going from -- yeah, Eric, Colin, Tina, and Linda. So, but this would be for Quarry Valley, so Eric's probably voting Middletown.
And GRCSU.
And ASU. And the other ones are?
Let me make a motion. How many is our proxy?
All right. Motion by Mike to have Linda be our proxy vote for VISA and VIHI at the VSBA meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At the end of the meeting, we'll just fill this stuff out. All right. In your pocket, you received three letters for the open Polley seat, and I only see one candidate here this evening. All candidates were invited to come, and the letters were put in the drive for everyone to review. So, welcome, Eric.
Hi.
I'm just gonna let Eric introduce himself and tell us a little bit about him, and then if anybody has any questions, feel free to inquire.
Okay. My name's Eric Hyer. I was raised in Polley, Vermont, graduated in 1991. Currently, I am a realtor with Northland Real Estate. That's in Polley. I'm coaching middle school football at the -- at the Polley High School, so I am involved with that. I've served -- I've done public service on the fire department, the rescue squad in the past. I served six years in the Vermont National Guard, and this is just a way for me to continue to give back to the community that helped raise me.
Great.
So that's basically why I'm here.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Eric? All right. So this seat, the appointment would be from November, essentially till March, but in March, you'd have to run again for the remainder of the seat. The seat has one year left on it, so you'd have to take out a petition. We can only appoint until the next election, so it will be November, December, January, February, right in the heat of everything, budgets, all the good stuff, where everybody really just likes to come and hug us all the time. So that's pretty much the essence of that. We meet here, the second Thursday each month at 6:00, unless we have special meeting. And as you can tell, Rebecca's joining us virtually. We do have that option also, which is great for people, so. All right. Anything else? Anyone? So it's the pleasure of the board. I, if you want to wait till the end of the meeting for executive session.
I'm motioning to bring the topic up in executive session.
Okay. All right. So we -- there are other candidates, so you're welcome to stay and listen to all the fun stuff that we get to do. And then we will.
Should we motion now, though, just to discuss? I think, you know, waiting.
To go into executive session?
Yeah. If the board would like, we could, you know, move into executive session now to discuss.
Would the board like to do that?
So you don't have to necessarily wait. So it's up to the board.
Because we do have budgets with Louis, and we know how that likes to drag on.
I believe one of the other candidates, she doesn't have the link to get on. She just messaged me. Can I just send her the link?
Of course. Yeah.
Okay. So.
Why don't we go on, and we'll go to the approval minutes, and we'll wait and see if they can get on. How about that? Perfect. Okay. So a motion would be in order for the approval of the September 14, 2023 minutes. So moved. Motion by Linda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion would be in order for the warrants. Receive your warrants via your GRCSU email. All questions should be directed to Louis. Motion for the warrants.
So moved.
Motion by Kristen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. And we have another candidate just joined, so.
Okay. All right, we'll go on.
Okay. So I do have a few items to discuss with you. This is beginning of budget season, so this becomes kind of our main priority right now. Louis, myself have a meeting with the building admins to discuss budgets and budget priorities. You know, we did discuss at the last meeting about this shift in language away from wish list to really around needs. And so as, you know, our building admins discuss needs with myself and Louis, we'll bring those back to the board as well, because I think it's important for us to really understand what they need respectively to, you know, to support their staff and their school, particularly as we look at school improvement, and some of the goals we set around academic growth as well as improving school culture in each of our buildings. So we've had some really good discussions, and I think as we move in through budget season, I think, you know, as a board, we'll get to hear some of the ideas and areas of growth that each of our admins have identified with their schools, particularly meet these goals. We also have been meeting with them around goal setting, particularly around school improvement plans. I think one of the nice things I've seen is, to meet with them, a lot of our goals are aligned with our strategic plan, which is something which we have not necessarily seen in the past, where I think we've had worthwhile building goals and administrative goals, but I think now there's more of alignment and more of a focus in terms of direction, which is what the intent of the Portage Graduate Strategic Plan was meant to do. And so we are seeing this kind of coalesce around this vision and these ideas about what that looks like. And I think it's important also that it's not kind of a lockstep. We're not looking to do a cookie cutter in each of our schools. We're really looking at how, you know, managing that vision, what that looks like with each of our schools, and be responsive to their needs. So it's something which, as I said, some great discussions that we'll see, and when we present our update in December, you'll hear some of the things that we have going on in our buildings and in the district and the ASU overall. Along that same line, on October 1st, the strategic plan was sent out to all community members. A high-resolution copy was uploaded into the board shared folder, so I do want to thank our administrators, our board members, who took time out of their busy schedule the past year as working on the Portage Graduate Strategic Plan. I know that, as I said, it's a nice, you know, kind of representation of all the work that we've done, but I know that on the backend, we just, you know, met this morning, do more work on the admin team. There still is a lot of work for us to do, but we have to kind of remind ourselves this is a five-year plan, and we're working towards this. But it is something which we're continually reassessing and making adjustments as necessary because we just want to make sure that all of our kids receive a high-quality education in each of our schools, and that each child has a highly effective teacher in front of them at all times. I think that, you know, that's our main focus. Our students will benefit the most out of this. The fast bridge assessment, we -- and I know our building admins may touch upon this a little bit later, but we have concluded our fall assessments. We did discuss the shift away from MAP last year, particularly with our elementary schools. We were doing, you know, we talked about, we believe we were over-assessing last year. We had MAP going, we had FastBridge, we had Sabers. I think we really wanted to kind of scale back. We had a lot of discussions around FastBridge versus MAP, and I think we sought the input from the staff in terms of what thoughts were, you know, had long, lengthy, you know, heartfelt, passionate discussions with the admin team. And as a group, we settled on FastBridge, and I think, you know, it still produces the same results that MAP will in terms of we're looking at growth and, you know, what it tells our students where they're at, where they need to be, what we can do to best support them. So we will have information for the board at the next month's board meeting, and there is a copy of the GRCSU reporting calendar. And what we are doing, I said this at all of our local board meetings this week, we are going to follow the same. So at November 7th, when GRCSU gets kind of an overall view, you know, the following week, when we come back to Quarry Valley, we will be discussing Quarry Valley FastBridge, and we'll talk about, you know, pros, cons, some of the things, you know, some of the hiccups we've seen, but our goal is, you know, like I said, is baseline data, and as we look at winter and we look at spring, we'll, you know, measure growth, because we have set, you know, our goal of every single one of our students in Quarry Valley, the ASU will show academic growth in the areas of math and literacy this year. So we believe that's possible, you know, and we believe that if we're doing this, we will see improvement in terms of proficiency and other achievements as well. So, and the last thing I do want to just touch upon is, yes, the VSBA/USA fall meeting is the October 26th, 27th. I know that Linda has volunteered to attend for Lake Maury, but there also is a virtual option for the fall, for the business meeting on the 26th at 4:00. So if you can't attend, there is a link that's attached to the report that's in the folder. But if you need access to that, you can reach out to myself or Kristi McGinnis, or it's even on the VSBA website as well. So it'd be great just for, you know, just to kind of hear some of the things that are going on, particularly around some of the VSBA resolutions. So that's all I have for.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions? All right. We're gonna jump back because Alex has joined, so welcome, Alex. We've already met and spoken with Eric, and what we're doing is just letting you introduce yourself to us, tell us a little bit about yourself, your interest, why you want to be on the board, or anything you'd like to tell us. So, welcome.
So I have ADHD, that was a lot of questions at one point. Do you mind going back over that so I can?
You can just tell us what you'd like to share with us about yourself and joining the board.
Okay, sure. So I'll tell you, I am a -- can everybody hear?
Yes.
Okay. I am a parent of three children that attend Polley Elementary School, and I previously was a bus driver for Polley. Before that, I was a bus driver for Wells. Since I graduated from Greenmount College in 2013, I've worked in many jobs within the school system, especially as a parent educator, I worked as a substitute teacher. That was never really my intention to be self-obsessive. I also coached high school sports. It was never my intention to be self-obsessive, aligned with education while I was in college, but that's sort of how they ended up making things sort of fall out. And I decided to reach out and find out more about this opportunity. I haven't really considered it much because, I don't know, I'll be honest, I wasn't really aware of what the school board did and what their role was. I think that pretty before that, I thought that it was just kind of a, I don't know, maybe I got mixed up with like a parent, a PTR or something, but it just seems like it was going to be a group of just parents. And then once I learned that there was more of a policy function and the ways that you had the opportunity to support the administration and cover really big issues that matter, that is really what drove me to actually be more concerned with what happened in the school district. And, yeah, I'm not really sure. I wasn't prepared to answer this question at all. I participated in other board spaces. I think as a Black and transgender individual, I think I should be in this space because there's not really much diversity in that space as far as race that I can see, as far as sexual orientation that I know. I'll just be real with you, that's why, as a parent, like it's important to me to bring the voice of people that are not usually represented in this space. So, you know, my intention is just really to, respectfully, I've lived in this community since basically 2008, for the better part of that time, and I'm not bringing an agenda, but I believe that there are whole squats of this population that really aren't listened to or -- and I don't think that purely on purpose, but I don't believe that folks have had representation. So that's also a primary driver of my interest. If there are specific questions that you have about my background or about things I can answer, specific questions a lot better. I kind of struggle with broad topics like this. Like I said, I have ADHD. As a neurodivergent person, there are certain things that work a little bit better with my brain, but.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Alex? All right. Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll move, take a motion to move into executive session for the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public, the public body must make the final hearing for appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in the open meeting, 1 VSA 313A3. So, motion. Motion by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will move into executive session at 6:20, and so we will excuse everyone. So the board is out of executive session at 6:34, and a motion coming out of executive session.
Just make a motion. Did we want to make?
Yes, please.
For Eric?
So the motion by Mike is to appoint Eric Hyer until March 2024. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So welcome, Eric.
Thank you.
So you'll have to go see Betsy.
Okay.
And she will swear you in.
Okay.
And then we will get an email set up for you, a GRCSU email, make an appointment to meet with Chris to kind of walk you through.
Okay.
How we receive information and all of that. And any questions you have, you can contact Chris.
Okay.
Chris gave us your job to tomorrow.
I spoke to her today, actually, about football stuff.
Okay. So she'll be setting the onboard process.
Okay.
And we'll get you set up ready to go.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome to stay this evening and.
Sure.
Listen to Louis and all the budget as he fights with us.
Tonight, I'm gonna be quick. It's the board's decision. Share with us next week. Or next month.
Next week. Really pushing. All right. So we left off at principals' reports. Everyone received their principal reports in their packets. Is there anything outstanding? I know this is like the worst question to ask these people, that anyone would like to share that has transpired since we last saw you all, which was July.
Well, of course, I want to talk just to -- are you shocked? I just want to say that both the Proctor schools were able to get off their comprehensive plan from the state, and that was a lot of work over the last four years for us to deal with and work on, and so it's just something to celebrate as a part of Quarry Valley. So I just wanted to say that, too.
Nicely done. Anybody else?
Well, if you want to go. All right. I feel like I gotta say something now. So there's a lot of stuff in my report that constitutes an enormous amount of efforts. I just want to thank all of the staff and students for a great start of the school year. We've got lots of new families to us. A lot of things that were a year ago were new, such as FastBridge, have now just become part of our practice, and we've just rolled with it. And people have just done exactly what they need to do, which is things that I asked them to do, and we've really spent a lot of time, we've devoted now two meetings a month on just student data, so, and what that looks like, and bringing all teachers, regardless of what they teach, from the regular core subjects or grade-level teacher, but also to the music teacher, the art teacher, the PE teacher, how does all of, how does a student's reading level impact what goes on in their classroom? So we've been spending a lot of time, and I just want to also thank the collaboration that we had for the event over at Proctor High School with the math event. That was a great event to get our students over to Proctor for that, and just a lot of collaboration between all the schools of Quarry Valley. So it's been a really good ongoing process this fall. I just want to talk to some of my teachers today, even the interventionists have been very welcome to my building. It's great. They're chopping at the bed. It's kind of like, you know, they want to just, we just finished the FastBridge, and then they did their other assessments, so they're starting to get their groupings together. But just, you know, yesterday for our data meetings, they met with the math and English teams respectively, and then I took the rest of the staff and worked with them, but just my staff is really thankful, and it's, I mean, hopefully, we'll see some changes with that. And I did have it wrong in my board report, but if you hadn't seen it, I was, you know, Joe Carroll came down and did super seniors, and it was actually David Maureen. It was, you know, doing, and he did a great job of that. It was great to have him there, and the guy's a great guy to work with, but he did a really nice job. And, you know, when I was talking to him about it, I said he doesn't want the focus on him. He wanted to be on the kids, and that's kind of how he, if you haven't seen it yet, he did that story. So just, you know, can't thank David Maureen enough for how he put into the school and the students and the town for the past.
Forty-four years.
Forty-four, forty-one, whatever years they have been there, so.
Great.
I will just highlight the work that our teachers did last, or, excuse me, yeah, last Wednesday on a shared student experience and some of the vision. That was some of the work that we started to do with CEOs, administrators, at the end beginning of the month, and just really focusing on how our teaching strategies and our vision for students in the building are going to take us next steps as, you know, approaching my second year with them and just where we're going coming off of a comprehensive plan and taking a step. So we'll revisit it over time.
Sure.
There's a lot of collaboration, a lot of smiles, wows, and then, you know, what are our next actual steps that we can take to move us forward?
Okay. Anybody else? No. All right. Great. Any questions for principals? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to Louis. Minions.
Before we get into the budget, I did find the sheet for the tabulator there. I was referring to the $500. So the $575 is the minimum charge. There's a whole bunch of, there's a scale on how the charge is determined. There's a setup charge, and each contest, each choice, each precinct, each memory card. So a bunch of things. The minimum charge is $575, and my assumption is that $1,200 is usually what the average cost is based on once you get it all set up.
Okay. Great.
All right. So budget. So in the packet was the FY25 budget timeline. Some, most of you have probably seen that already. It's been discussed at the GRCSU board meeting as well. I think it was in the packet last month, just as kind of FYI, so that you knew this was coming for this meeting today. So as far as the budget timeline goes, tonight, we are just going to review the timeline and kind of just have a board discussion as to some priorities that you'd like to see in the budget process. I've already started meeting with all the administrators. I've gotten feedback from all of them. I'm in the process of compiling the first draft and taking their feedback into consideration in that first draft. In November, I present to the board the first draft of that budget. At that time, we'd be looking for a direction from the board as to your thoughts on the budget, and which direction you want us to go, whether there's things you want us to research, add, delete, as well as the direction of the overall increase and where you'd like to see that. It's really important that we get that direction at the November board meeting so that we really can go back and meet and start thinking about, okay, if we do, if we need to cut, if we need to add, where we're going to pull that from and what is really needed. So then, based on that, we'll bring a second draft in December. At that time, we still want to add many of the pieces that we need to really determine the impact on the tax rate. There's three factors that come from the state that usually don't come until, I would say, mid to late December. They're due out December 15th, but the last few years, we really haven't seen them until December 20th or so. And that's the CLA, the equalized pupils, and then the yield, which we don't get a final decision on the yield until probably sometime in April, but we start to get a sense as to where the yield is going to go, probably in the end of December, early January, once the legislators start meeting and start discussing. And the yield is the number that comes from the state. The legislators decide on that. It's usually part of the big budget bill, the miscellaneous bill, and that's what's going to determine your tax rate. That part's out of your control, but it takes what you've decided as an educational spending and expense, and really it's a dividing factor to determine what that tax rate's going to be. So in January, we'll meet and review the third draft, and we will be looking for an approval of the budget at the January board meeting. It's important that we have it at the beginning of January so that we can start working on town reports, our annual booklets, brochures, and start really our prep for getting information out to communities so we can start gaining support of the budget. Usually, we get information on our websites and Front Row Forum and whatever to get the information out to the communities. Any questions on the timeline? Any questions on the timeline? So here's where I'd be looking just for some feedback. Those of you who were involved last year sort of know the process. I think everybody here, right, was in the budget last year? So based on last year's budget and the budgets that you've been... That you've experienced and what you're seeing in your communities, what type of things would you like to see as budget priorities for this upcoming budget?
So I think we saw in principal reports that there were some principals that had included things that were needs, so hopefully those things are being incorporated into the first draft.
Yeah.
Okay.
So based on my conversation with the administrators and depending on the item that they ask for, if they're... Usually, if they're smaller items, they go directly in the budget. If they're larger items and it's something that is questionable as to whether it's going to... If whether it should be directly put into the budget, it's usually... It goes on the items to be considered by the board.
Right.
So like, if there's new staffing or stuff like that, we may not put that directly in the budget. It'll be for items to be considered, and when we come back in November, that'll be on the summary of change document, and the administrator would speak to that need and provide supporting documentation. And then after the board hears all of that, they would decide... And where the budget is, then the decision will be made, okay, can the board budget support that and whether it should go into the budget or not.
Great. So I think... I'll just say personally, I think with respect to staffing, my hope would be that the staffing that we're looking at is staffing that can be supported by data or population, class size, that building principals are coming and requesting. And at the last meeting, Linda had asked in that spreadsheet, I'm guessing it'll be for the November meeting, about...
We'll have that out to the board by the end of next week.
Okay.
So we have more enough time to review that information as well.
Okay.
And I will drop that into the board resource folder.
Sure. That would be great.
Christine said. Is that something you're handling, Chris? Yes. Okay.
I think it would be nice to know, because building admin have to be forecasting out also where they see that collaboration going forward next year with respect to staff or coursework or those kinds of things. I know that just because of our location, that Proctor and West Rutland have an easier time doing that, and you have been doing it, and I think that's incredible. But I'm just one... I think it's just good for us to know kind of if you're building on that, if it's staying where it is now, if it's not happening, just what that is, so kind of what that looks like also.
That'll be also part of strategic plan discussions as well.
Thoughts? Comments? Tom would probably like to see the budget to be up about 12%, I'm thinking. I know... I know how he likes that.
Here we go.
I know how he likes that, so.
Yeah. Get how much each school went up to, or is that a... Let's say, here's our budget the whole day, but here's Poltoni, they want $50,000. West Rutland wants $80,000. You know what I mean? Compared to... Because we get it one slip, and it's got $18 million on it, oh, we're up whatever. Hard to pick stuff out of that to see where actually it went.
So last year, I believe where you referred to is last year, there was a one-page document that showed the department, and it was like all the instruction was included for all the schools. It was combined into one instruction line. The nurse line, all five schools were included into one line. So it was a summary by function, what we call functions in essence department, so health, plan operations. And then so you would like the detailed sheet.
Not crazy, but like say, Poltoni Elementary's budget is $10,000. Okay, this year they want 12,000. You know what I mean? Just so we can see, ooh, somebody's out of line, somebody's not going up, you know what I mean?
But that could probably be a summary page, too, right? I mean, because like in prior years, we've gotten the budget, and the budget looks like this, because every...
All I need is one sheet of paper. West Rutland went up...
So what the increases.
...a thousand more line here.
Yeah.
Proctor went up... Yeah. I don't need to roll.
And I will say that the detail... I start with the detail, so I have the detailed sheet that's 18 pages, and that feeds into... That feeds into the summary.
Real simple.
Yep. I got you. I got it.
Okay.
I think just bring the first draft after you spoke with Chris in building admin is really just the best, you know, for us to have that first draft, review it, and just have a sense of where building admin sees us going in the upcoming year. Yeah. So it's difficult to sit here and say, absolutely not, we don't want to see this, but we want to see this. Right. Because they're really driving the bus, and we have to respect those choices and decisions unless they're...
And this is typically a short discussion.
Yeah.
It's just really preliminary, just so that when we come in with the first draft, there's no surprises, and if there's something that you do have in mind that you want included, it's best to get that included as early as possible so that we're not a month behind. Because if you mention something the next meeting, we're not seeing until December, so...
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think we've done this before with kind of different, what I call scenarios, just like, you know, here's... You know, after you meet with them and here have their priority issues. If everybody got all their priority issues, if they had to pick the top two, if they had to pick the top one, and sort of what that looks like, and what if they don't get that priority, what the consequence of that is as well. Like we've talked... We've sort of had versions of that before that you put together, so I think that's helpful, too. So.
Louis, will you be able to have the budget in the folder, like the Friday or the weekend before? Okay. Just give people the time to review. The goal was to have it in there. My goal is to have them done a week beforehand, so depending on whenever that gets released to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're discussing budget, I also think it would be great if people could just schedule on their calendars that for the December meeting, that we really need to be in person because we're probably going to be talking about personnel and contracts. It's really hard when a lot of people are online. It makes it incredibly difficult to have those discussions. So hopefully, people can kind of plan ahead of time for that, and that obviously at the next meeting, we would like all building admin to be present.
See if you can have a...
Absolutely. All right. Seems like that's all we have to give you, Louis. All right. We'll move on to contract recommendations. For professional staff, we have April Morris, West Rutland teacher of Horizontal Move from 65-494 to 67-648. Support staff, Michael Lightfoot, Poltoni Elementary maintenance staff at $17.65 an hour. Extracurricular, we have Christine Brenn at Poltoni High School, middle school soccer coach, 1,032 stipend. Tabitha Perry, West Rutland, 4-5 co-ed soccer coach, 855 pro-rated stipend. Brooke Debonis, Poltoni High School seventh grade class advisor, 241... $241.50 stipend. Chad Pulver, Poltoni Elementary, 5-6 basketball coach, 1,089 stipend. Ethan Cameron Valpo, Poltoni Elementary, 3-4 basketball coach, 1,032 stipend. Eric Hyer, Poltoni High School middle school football coach, 1,032 stipend. Laura Brayton, Poltoni High School seventh grade class co-advisor, 241.50 stipend. And the following for mentoring, the stipend is to be determined, and there is a scale for that. Correct? So I'm not going to read that for everyone. Christina Glass, mentoring one staff member. Caleb Poljasic, mentoring two staff members. Courtney Elliott, mentoring one staff member. Danielle Fagan, mentoring one staff member. Matthew Olnick, mentoring one staff member. Hannah Corcam, mentoring one staff member. Jessica Adat, mentoring one staff member. Megan Doherty, mentoring one staff member. Jennifer Perrin, mentoring one staff member. Catherine Mahoney, mentoring one staff member. Maureen Cahill-Brown, mentoring one staff member. Scott Holloman, mentoring one staff member. Jason Groat, mentoring one staff member. Philip Henry, mentoring one staff member. Sarah Godfrey, mentoring one staff member. Barbara Pennington, mentoring one staff member. Pamela Knott, mentoring one staff member. And Melissa Christensen, mentoring one staff member. A motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as presented.
I guess scale, rough idea.
I don't remember what the scale is.
It varies based on whether they're a level one or two.
Yeah.
I believe that's five or seven.
Yeah. So moved. Okay. Discussion? Yeah?
Corey Valley, is there two fishing teams?
No.
I thought I saw Skazoo was in there.
Oh, there's a JV and a varsity. Is that what you mean?
Did he get a stipend? I didn't ever remember.
I don't know. I'd have to ask Joe when he comes back, Tom. I don't know the answer.
Okay, because he should get one, just like the other guy. I mean, maybe...
The other guy, we use his boat, so that's part of...
Skazoo's probably... You're using his boat, too, I would think.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll have to ask Joe.
He should get... Was that?
He's using his boat.
Skazoo? Yeah, so he should. And maybe we already did, and I just...
I don't think so.
I just read in the paper.
I don't think... I think we only did one for bass fishing. We just did for...
We can look into it, and if there's any, we'll bring it back for November.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Motion made by Linda. Further discussion?
I have a question. What kind of things are involved with mentoring?
There is a handout we can provide and put in the drive. It tells you what they do, the number of hours and those kinds of things that they're required.
Basically, it's more of more senior teacher mentoring a newer teacher or...
I want to be able to teach a guest.
Yeah, a first or second-year teacher.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
So Joe's here. You want to ask him?
We have two fishing teams, right?
We had a... Called a JV team, but it's because you can only have two kids on a team. There were four or five... There were five kids who were interested, so there was a volunteer.
Okay. Does he use his own boat?
He did use his own boat.
So does he get like what the other guy gets?
No.
We should give him... He's burning his juice and everything, so...
Be nice to give him a little something.
Just what the other guy gets.
But he was volunteering.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can look and see what Joe...
We are supposed to put in receipts for anything that they... Their gas for their boat, anything that they've used for that. They aren't giving us receipts for us to reimburse them for all that.
But isn't the other guy getting like... It's not $500?
It's like, yeah, Jeff does, yeah.
We have not done a contract for him, but...
Yeah, no, we approved Jeff.
No, no, for Jeff, yes, for Mr. Patch, yes.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, Skazoo's using his boats. Does he should?
So Tom, we're going to reimburse his...
So we could have Joe fill out a sticker request, and then we'll bring it before the board.
Yeah, that's up to everybody.
We'll bring it before the board for discussion in November. We'll have Phil a sticker request, and we can discuss it. Good.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did everybody remember where we were? Okay. These are second read policies. A1, role and adoption of school board policies. E12, flag display. F11, English learners. F25, section 504 and ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. F27, communicable disease mitigation measures for students and staff. G12, proficiency-based graduation requirements. G14, class size policy. A motion would be in order to approve the second reads. Motion by Mike. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The following are first read policies. D4, visitors, volunteers, and work-study students. F13, harassment, heasing, and bullying prevention of students. F23, GRC SU equity policy. G9, responsible computer network interuse... Internet use. A motion would be in order to accept first read policies and move on as second reads.
I'll make that. Go ahead. I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We've come to our second public comment. No one else has joined us online or here in person. I did just want to take a moment and say, I didn't mention it when we appointed Eric, that we just want to thank the three candidates for submitting letters of interest, that that's probably the most letters of interest we've had for a seat, and that all the candidates were qualified. It's an uncomfortable situation when you have to pick one, so... But that there will be a seat open in Poltoni because this seat... This position is only until March, so if other people are interested, it's always nice to have a good race, and that's it. Our next meeting will be here on November 9th at 6:00. I think we're really going to try just to focus that meeting on the budget. That would be great. We'll obviously have a few policies just to read through, but unless something incredibly important...
Would you like us to postpone the fast bridge till December, then?
Um, no. How long do you think... That's not going to be a huge presentation, I don't think. Do you think?
It could be about 45 minutes or so.
Yeah, I think if we just do fast bridge and budget, would that be okay, just to do that?
I think families would be good seeing fast bridge since we've gotten...
Yeah, no, no.
You guys are okay with that, so?
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. I just... I just think that I don't want to get us too loaded down. We'll just take all reports and everything just in the packet, and unless someone has a question, we'll just move that along. And so the bulk of the discussion, we'll start with the fast bridge discussion, and then we'll move into budgets.
Yeah, sounds great.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sounds great.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? Any other questions? Discussion?
I just want to say this is... Looks like a great place for meetings and stuff, so it looks really nice, and the new digs look great, so.
You know what I think would be wicked cool, though? Like you have all of these walls.
Where are we heading?
Yeah. I'm sure.
I want to steal your thunder, but we've already... So what we'd like to do is we're going to...
There's going to be art from everybody?
Have pictures of students throughout the hallways.
Okay, awesome.
What we'd like to also do is use this as like a living art gallery, rotating each month, like a different school will feature like art here. I know we've seen it, and we talked to the art teachers where we work at the building admins, it's just...
Oh, perfect.[1716.62]